We all have a motion?
I'm moved.
All right. Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. All in favor? Motion carries. Clerk would read the revisions.
To the consent agenda, we're substituting item 5F resolution only for resolution accepting a hazard mitigation grant from MEMA for parks and recreation. And to the routine agenda, we're adding a docket in the amount of eighty-five thousand, twenty-one dollars and forty-one cents.
I'm moved the agenda is amended.
All right. We have a motion to approve the agenda as amended by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Gines. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Mayor's report.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I only have a lot. I think we're trying to beat some weather today, so I'll keep it short. I do want to indicate that we've got some good news from the result of a few trips to Washington. We've got a two-point-one million-dollar award for our connector from Senator Wicker's office. So that was, you know, a good, good win for us. Other than that, welcome everybody to our meeting. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Any department reports?
None.
Are being none, we'll move on to council reports. Mr. Lawrence?
You had a couple of things. We're talking about, we had a great Friday night. Fofo didn't come this time. We had a seafood buffet for the senior Olympics. Paul and I was there, they had one heck of a crowd. And the cooking of the shrimp and the fish, they do one great job. I don't know what group did it, whether it's the firemen, the policemen, whoever did it was fine. And all these people was kind of happy. We was glad to have them come to Biloxi. It's amazing how many people from out of town at this thing. You didn't realize it was that many coming from out of town. The biggest thing we had actually was just pickleball. Like, two-hundred-and-twenty people participated in the pickleball. I think that's pretty, just says how strong pickleball has got for any city, and our city especially. The second we had was, we cut the ribbon at St. Mary's Park of Wilshire, and Paul was there, Fofo was there. And we had, they built the gardens, they did a lot of good things, and we learned a lot of things they needed. And we discussed about getting those things done for the park, water fountain, upgrading the lights, trying to handle the drainage, any problem they had right there. So both of those things were good events for the city of Biloxi. The third thing is something I told the neighbors and Father Ryan I would do. I know they're all upset with this hotel coming in there, and they just don't want it to there because of the neighborhood, and I agree with them. When you affect one-hundred-and-sixty-something families for thirty-five jobs, I think we're going the wrong way, especially for an area that's never had any motel in it. This is a little different than putting them in different places where they had them this year. So I told them I'm going to help them as much as I can, fight for them as much as I can to slow it down. And if we need to go another direction, maybe we need to attack more of the Broadwater. Go ahead and add a VFW property, where all these things are sitting on hold, and even Margaritaville. You're talking about probably twenty-five-hundred hotel rooms with a lot of impact, three-thousand jobs in a couple of them places. Those are the things that we need to be attacking. I mean, I know Blessy's pushing a thing like that, and I just don't think that's the right thing to do to affect that many families for that small amount. I mean, it's a hotel, it's a small forty-unit hotel, but I'm saying when that many, it affects that many people, their lives, their neighborhood, their property values, you're talking about that area right there, you're talking about sixty-five million in property value. So everything is a plus for the neighbors, except for the hotel. The other spots they put them, they have no problem with that. The props are owned properly for that, had them before. We had the Comfort Inn, Comfort Suites up in Wolf Riverville, they never come back. Had Jubilee, a couple of them small was, they didn't come back. Now we're lucky enough that Legends opened up, they did good at the one-hundred-and-thirty-two room at Legends, great. What is the one on the south, the little hotel on the south, ninety-eight units right there? So had a lot of them come back. Plus we added a bunch, put the Honda when they had them seven stores. I mean, they got a total of like four-hundred-and-seventy-nine rooms. So there's a lot of good things happening, a lot of growth coming, but I think we need to, Fofo, you and Blessy want to do something? Man, go after that Broadwater project. We need to get that, that's big. That's what, twelve-hundred rooms? And then you've got the VFW property where the yacht club's at, another thousand rooms? I know, we fighting to get that. And then even Margaritaville, they're your buddies, you be playing in the band with Kiss, they come down there on Fifth Street. I mean, that's what you need to be attacking. To me, just leave this neighborhood alone. So I'm going to do what I can to fight for them and stop the project best I can. I told them I'd pass that on to y'all at the end at the meeting, so doing what I told them I'd do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gines.
Yeah, just wanted to give a shout-out to Women's Group. I had the honor and pleasure of opening up, bringing greetings to about three-hundred women, businesswomen, at the Seaford Center. They called it Boss Ladies, and they had a great time here in Biloxi. Most of them was from out of town, and they got a chance to visit our city, see all the amenities. And these young ladies, which are mostly entrepreneurs, are looking at putting things in the community and putting things in Biloxi. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to Marquita Baroness for putting on the venue at the Seaford Center for the Boss Ladies. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Newman?
Yes, so St. Mary's Park was actually in my ward until the ward line's just changed, so now it's in George. But my group with Hillary Park actually tried for years to work with Sherry and get the playground, something in there when she had to take it up when I first got elected. And finally, sparkling ice stepped up to the plate, and we're really thankful for them, even though it's not in my ward anymore. I'm so excited, they finally got a new playground. Thank you.
Great. Mr. Demming?
Just real quick, Mike, I didn't see, did you send me an email with an update on the catch basin issue over there at the Club Boss Circle?
Yeah, I wrote that to you so that you wouldn't have to ask me that again tonight.
I overlooked it, that's why.
I looked at my notes from the last meeting and realized I hadn't answered you yet. We did this afternoon look at the elevations and the fall of the land away from those houses and where the water's supposed to be going. I just couldn't remember talking to you about what the issue was. We will send an inspector out there tomorrow that'll walk it.
The issue, some of the residents brought it to me that, I think when we looked on Mr. Vankey's property that has no house on it, it looks like there's a catch basin designed to draw the water there, but there's no release for the water. So they were talking to me about the possibility of running a pipe from that catch basin, a couple hundred feet to the bay, so rainwater could run off in that direction.
And this is, the catch basin is on a property that has no house?
There's no house there. I think we looked at it on the GIs, and it had, I think, a...
It's on that circle that backs up to the wetlands?
Correct. And then if you have an update on the potential paving of the Ravenwood area and...
Well, a catch basin, it's just catching water, not dispensing it, it's not doing any good, so we'll still see if we can find a solution to that one.
Right. And then you were giving me an update on Ravenwood?
Yeah, on Ravenwood, and we issued a purchase order today to our concrete subcontractor to repair the curb and gutter. And once that's done, we'll issue a PO to the, Bless you, we'll issue a PO to the paving company.
Okay, great, thank you.
So it's moving.
Right. I appreciate that. Mr. President, that's all I have.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Tisdale.
Yeah, just a couple of things, just checking on that noise ordinance. I know we're revising that at some point. We're getting closer to resolution. I know that would help the police department out a little bit.
Yeah, we're close with the success of the tree bank and getting that involved, we're heading towards the noise ordinance.
All right. All right. Let's not get too excited, let's stay focused. We'll get there. Second thing is, I know with this, with the Mississippi Medical Cannabis Act, there's an opt-out provision. I don't know if we're looking to opt-out or not, I just know there's a deadline, but it's within ninety days or whatever. And if we are looking to opt-out, I don't know that we are or not, but if we are, then just get us a resolution, not at the eleventh hour, but because sometimes we table these things, and if we're brushing up against the deadline, I don't want to...
We don't anticipate opting out. We are going to add some modifications to the land development ordinance to indicate where they can and cannot be present, because that is not, there's no column for either any of these cannabis-type distributor or retail or so. So I think that, where does that stand in the, for the planning commission?
Or do we know when that will be going to the planning commission roughly? Mr. Creel?
We're putting the language together now about what zones would allow it. We anticipate that the zones that we'll propose to the planning commission and to the council for the sales part of it, there are actually five different entities that will deal with cannabis. And on the ones that involve sales, we would propose that it be allowed in any of the places like where drugstores are allowed to operate. As far as the growing and the research facilities, that those would, we recommend that those would be allowed in agricultural and industrial zoning. Now, if you look at that state law that was passed, it's over two-hundred pages, and only three of those deal with local zoning. So the limits that we would be able to put on it have to do with the zoning aspect of it, because everything else is going to be regulated by the Department of Revenue and by the Department of Health for the state.
All right, thank you. Any idea when that might, it'll go to the planning commission, there'll be a public hearing, I would assume, correct?
Our next cutoff date, our next cutoff date for getting something to the planning commission is March the thirty-first, and that would be for the planning commission meeting on May the fifth.
Okay, so that's probably the target date there, May fifth, okay. Thank you. Appreciate that, thank you. That's all I have.
All right. Mr. Demming would like to follow up on that topic.
You must be looking at the law on double-sided paper, because it's four-hundred-and-twenty-four pages in my office.
It was double-sided, yes.
Do we, I know that there is a very small section for local ordinances. I mean, it leaves a lot of leverage for the cities to choose to opt-in, opt-out, and control what they do with zoning. We have not received the input with regard to the regulations that the Health Department of the state of Mississippi is going to impose on that industry, which could affect the city. Have you had any contact with them? Do we know what to expect from the Health Department?
Well, I can tell you from my conversation with Senator Delano, that he warned me right up front that the people who think that they're just going to be able to rent a store somewhere and start selling this, that's not realistic. There are regulations from the state that will govern the type of facility you have to have, how it works during the day, you know, the way that the facility has to be constructed, the oversight inside of the structure, the regulations are very, very strict. So I don't think we'll have to worry about people trying to pop one up on every corner, although we are receiving calls already about when we're going to have the language, the language ready. And as soon as we can get that to the planning commission, and they have their public hearing, their recommendation, we'll come to the council right after that.
Is your department going to be required to enforce those regulations, or will the state?
Not the state regulations, no. My understanding is, and based on what I've read, is that all of that will be done by the Health Department. We would only be in charge of anything that has to do with the zoning.
Thank you.
Mr. Demming, on the cannabis issue, you did say double-sided, not double-vision, right? Just clarifying. All right. Mr. Barrett?
Only question I have is, Mr. Leonard, do we know when they're going to complete that pavilion at Eagle Point Park? They've been building for about five months now?
No.
Okay. I was just wondering.
I don't know right now.
I started my house.
Before we started, it's, when we ran out of money, and we were working through a progress payment for him. I'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Okay, yeah, I was just checking. It just seems like it's taking a long time for a pavilion, so just checking in on that. And Jerry, I have a couple of questions for you. After, no, after the meeting's fine. I had someone call me about something, I'll ask you after that. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Barrett. All right, I got a few things. I just want to note, in one of our previous council meetings, we did pass a short-term rental provision that they would change the address. Mr. Creel has confirmed that that address did change from Jefferson Davis to Highway Ninety address, so that should satisfy the will of the council for that measure. Also, Maupass Landing, I got a couple of drainage issues I want to follow up on. Maupass Landing, I did get an email from the resident, I did forward it to the administration. Mike, I don't know if you recall receiving that recently, I just wanted to put it on the radar today. A drainage issue behind one of the homes in Maupass Landing that is saturating the ground. If somebody could look at that, I would appreciate it. And then the other one deals with the reoccurring issue off of Lauren Falls near Taylor Oaks. That's just a loose end. I know it's, that's another area, when the lawns have been redrawn, that's in Mr. Demming's ward, but I do want to kind of follow that and take care of that loose end since it started, you know, with me when I was representing that area. And then the last thing, on a real positive note, we have over four-hundred kids that'll be attending opening ceremonies this Saturday. I thought the president of Little League was going to be here tonight, but he did have practice. He thought maybe they were going to get rained out and he'd come to this meeting, but he wanted me to convey to each and every council member that you're invited, eight-fifteen AM in the morning. You'll get the privilege of, and honor of throwing out a pitch, you'll be announced to the crowd, and he would like to extend that invitation, both to the council, certainly to the mayor, and any directors. Specifically, he named our fire chief, he said he went to school with you, Chief, Gerald Everett, and he said he would personally make sure that he recognized you if you were able to attend that. But that should be a fun event tomorrow. And that concludes the council's report. We do have, under our council report this evening, a special guest that wants to address the council, owner of McElroy's Harbor House, Mr. Mickey McElroy. If you come up and you can address the council.
All right, my name to everybody is Mickey McElroy. My real name is not, you probably don't even know it, John Michael McElroy. But for the record, and anyway, everyone has a letter that I wrote expressing what I've come up here for. I've been in business here, and everybody knows, we've been in business since nineteen-seventy-four, my entire family, with a bunch of breaks, with storms and different things. My family is still involved in this restaurant. I have eighteen years left on my lease, which seems like a long time, especially for me, because I doubt if I'm going to be here eighteen years. But my family is going to be, and I'm requesting an extension on the lease, and also a first refusal at the end of that lease. I don't want my family to be looking down the road, because they're still young, and be looking down the road at, well, some other council and some other mayor, and saying, "See ya," without at least having the option to bid on that at the end of the term. So basically, that's basically what I'm here for. I'm not going over everything that was in my letter, I gave it to y'all, y'all can read that. But I feel like the growth and the economy of Biloxi is growing in an unbelievable way. We can't hardly get employees to work, as I'm sure y'all know, through other businesses. I don't know why, but nobody wants to work, but the business continues to come. We are doing very well at the restaurant, and I'm also in the process of doing another project, and the city will hear about, I guess the city will hear about it pretty quick, because I told her, and she'll put it in the news. But I just want to have the opportunity, and my family have the opportunity, to grow with the economy of Biloxi as it grows. And the financial situations as we go along, if we have, people have been trying to get me to put something underneath my restaurant, you know, a bar, whatever. And whatever I do will require financing. And in order for me to finance, a financial, a bank will not give you the money you need to do a project, if it's going to be two-hundred thousand to five-hundred thousand. They want to know that you're going to be there a while, they want to know that your lease has got longevity to it, and you can afford to pay it back to them. So I would like to express my thanks for allowing me to come up and do this. I've been trying to work on this for quite a while, but the city's been busy, I've been busy. It's nobody's fault, it's just that I've been busy, and so has, you know, y'all have been busy with numerous projects.
Mr. McElroy, a couple of things, but before I ask a couple of questions, will you recognize your family that's here with you tonight?
Oh, yeah.
Y'all don't mind standing up when he recognizes you?
Yeah, this is my son Keith, my daughter Jennifer, and my granddaughter Kate.
Oh, great. Well, listen...
And she just started in the dishroom, I believe.
Well, listen, just, I'd like to express, you know, my thank you for the hard work that you've put in, McElroy's Harbor House, one of our few local restaurants that are standing tall and does a great job in providing guests, and I see you there entertaining everybody all the time. But a couple of questions I have, I know you did some expansion, if you don't mind to summarize that a little bit from a recent expansion, and do you have any plans in the future to do any additional investment that might, you know, can tie into?
As, right. As the last expansion, I did, I didn't do it right. I went ahead and expanded and didn't come to the city. I asked permission to do it, and they said, "Yeah," but I didn't come and say, "I need some time to pay for it." So this time, I'm coming and asking for a little extra time for my family to not be nailed. But yes, in the future, I've been looking at underneath there, a way to do something as is melamush, not melamushroom, what's that one across the street from me? They have the stuff underneath it and...
Alamoos.
Thank you. And, but there's a tremendous opportunity there. The harbor's phenomenal. We get, we are, we're getting all kind of people from all over the United States coming in. I question them every time. When they come in and sit down, I try to talk to them and find out. But down below would be a tremendous spot for local, what do you, what do they call them with the shacks, the local?
Food trucks, food trucks, vendors.
Thank you. That too. And we have been talking about it, but with everything else going on, the COVID and all that, we've been, there's a time for that sort of stuff. But to answer your question shortly is yes, we would like to have the opportunity to invest in more in that location, because it's available and it's there, you know, so...
All right. Anyone else?
Anybody have any other questions?
Mr. McElroy, or have any questions?
How old I am?
I would just like, I would like to say, I appreciate your investment in our city for many years, and when I was fifteen years old, you gave me my first job.
I remember.
I worked for McElroy's washing dishes and bussing tables all the way through high school.
I remember. We, I run into people all the time, lawyers, doctors, councilmen, everybody, that say that they started their job at the restaurant, which I'm sure there was that many that started at Bar S's and Mahoney's and that sort of thing, but no, I remember you.
Well, now we know the time.
And I guess I could say, since I'm here wanting something, I guess I could say I'm proud of you.
Thank you, Mr. McElroy. Appreciate your comments.
Thank you very much for your time.
I'm sorry. Mr. Lawrence?
Yes, sir.
The main thing you're looking for is the first right of refusal, first right of refusal, is that what you're looking for more than anything else?
That's one of the main things, right. We need a first right of refusal, so that down the road, eighteen years or twenty-two or whatever, that somebody doesn't say to my family, "See you around."
So if they amended the contract to that, you'd be fine with that, that happens?
Right. At the end of, at the end of the term, they need to, they need to have the right to rebid it or whatever. And normally, in those business-type situations, they would rebid it. They would say, "Okay, you got first refusal, I got Mike over here wants to open up a hot dog stand, and he's willing to pay X." So, but we need to have the first right of refusal. I feel like that.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else?
Anybody else?
All right. Thank you.
All right, guys, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to citizens' comments. We have a total of forty-five minutes allocated for this section of the agenda.
Mr. President, could I interrupt? I forgot one thing in Mayor's report that I really would, for the press and for people who are watching this tonight, that on the occasion of eleven o'clock Friday, we'll have our first state, official state visit by Ambassador Simonovic from the Republic of Croatia. He's the ambassador to the United States. We're going to host him, as well as the general counsel. Her name is Sonia Lakovich. And so we'll have some sort of reception, or a reception of greet and meet, meet and greet here at City Hall at eleven o'clock. So wanted to add that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Okay, this portion of the agenda is our citizens' comments. We have forty-five minutes allotted. We'll go ahead and get started. Anyone on my left, your right, would like to come up and speak? Please take your seat, announce your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
My name's Eugene Lacaze at two-fourteen Porter Avenue, Council Mayor Gilage. Our neighborhood is on the cusp and has been. We need your help. I used to be proud to say I lived on Porter, but I feel like someone decided that Porter Avenue is now some type of no-go zone. Our elderly live in fear. I hear, all I hear from the police are excuses. Tourism is great and all. In fact, my grandfather was director of the Harrison County Tourism Commission at one point, but I hope to remind you that you have constituents that live here. While Porter may have more commercial than a lot of other neighborhoods, I feel like you have surrendered your flagship avenue to vagrants and hobos. We allow, while allowing the Clark Oil Shell Station to operate as a public nuisance, and they are a public nuisance. This is not Mr. Gunderson's neighborhood shell service station that closes at 5:00 PM. Our neighborhood is plagued by twenty-four-seven noise pollution, litter, and drunken vagrancy. Once, when I went to fill out a patrol request form at night and saw people sleeping on property at the police station, well, I'm afraid our city, I'm afraid our city and its enforcement of the laws are turning into a joke. The lunatics are running the asylum. It seems as though they have rights, but we do not. That very expensive park at the foot of Porter seems to have been surrendered, and when the pier was there, many of us locals couldn't or wouldn't use it out of safety concerns either. If the noise ordinance, which I did hear y'all address this evening, if the noise ordinance is unenforceable, then please rewrite the ordinance. Biloxi likes to party, I like to party. I like music, I like music with bass. However, when amplified bass music that rattles the glass in my windows and cracks the plaster on my ceilings while I'm trying to sleep or read the news is unacceptable, period. Too many incidents to list, but a few examples of happenings in our neighborhood. When we first moved back, as a new homeowner, I flagged down the ice cream truck for what should have been a memorable experience with the ice cream man at our new home. When a very aggressive bum comes from across the street and tries to physically intimidate me into buying him something, even the ice cream man felt bad for me and my ruined experience. Believe it or not, we have even watched, ah, forgive me, I'm going to, we have even watched women urinate at the pumps at the shell. Once, we witnessed a confrontation at Clark Shell involving a katana sword. My partner called the police, but the report on file doesn't even reference the weapon. We have called dispatch with no response at all on more than one occasion. Christmas morning, 2021, my partner had to call on the homeless throwing a party.
Start your Thomas up.
We need your help.
Thank you. Anyone else on my left, your right? Anybody on my right, your left? Okay, this section of the agenda is now closed. We'll move on to the policy agenda. Clerk would read the ordinance.
Ordinance to amend ordinance number twenty-three fifty-four pertaining to temporary sign permits.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Demming. Is there a second?
A second.
Second by Ms. Newman. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry. It's a first reading. Yeah, I'm getting it. All right. All right. Next one, we want to resolutions.
Resolution granting conditional use approval for a short-term rental located at two forty-four Raynor Street.
All right. This was moved earlier.
This was something, yeah, we moved it, but we tabled it. And I wanted to ask Mr. Grille about it real quick. Is he here? Is he? Okay. Okay, just.
You want him first or me?
Yeah, well, basically, I just wanted to know. I wrote by and I saw it. And I just wanted, let me ask him a couple of questions, Mr. Grille.
I, I got some pictures of the inside of it. I don't know if that's something that would be helpful, but.
Okay, yeah, I just saw it, and I was wondering what all you had left to do on it.
Um, you know, we've, if, if you don't mind, I can bring you this.
Yes. Okay. And I, I just went by, looked at it, saw the outside, and if you just boost it up, I'm okay with it. I'm okay with it after, after seeing this.
You know, I think, you know, we, we, we fixed a lot of the termite damage. You know, a lot of the stuff, you know, it, it needs a new roof. But, you know, there's just, the economics of it is, you know, we paid X for it, we put X into it. I mean, if it starts bringing in money, we'll be able to do new roof, new, new exterior siding. I mean, I, I think that house will be a really good, you know, addition to the neighborhood. I mean, you, you know, it's probably worth, you know, we bought it for a hundred, it's probably worth one eighty-five as it sits right now. It's relative to what we got listed for.
Yeah. And as you know, we're, we're selling Biloxi, and every person that visit, you want, want them to have a good, pleasant experience, especially if you're getting into that area. And that's what I was concerned about. So if everything, if you feel, if, if you promise me you're going to do what it takes to take care of it.
Hundred percent, yeah. I mean, everything we make from that property is going to go back into the, go back into it. I'd love to sell it for two hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars in two years. You know, that, that will be my end goal, you know. So, yeah, I mean, I, I think any, any proceeds we make from that is going to get, is going to get back into the property.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yeah, Jerry. And right here says a short-term rental within an existing single-family residence. This is a single-family resident neighborhood? You said assistance on an RM thirty.
No, sir. It's a, RM thirty is multifamily zoning, and this is allowed as a conditional use. And the condition that the planning commission placed on it is that they would have to add a solid fence to the north side to separate this from the neighbors. This house, if you look at the picture, has a space for one, one parking space on the south side, one parking space on the north side. And on the north side, it immediately abuts that driveway for the neighbors. So the planning commission put the condition in there that a solid fence would need to be added to that north side along the property line.
How many rooms in this house?
Two bedrooms.
Two bedrooms?
Mm-hmm.
So how many, so you have two different renters in it? Okay.
No.
One, so it's just one?
Yeah, one at a time.
Yeah, they may have up to four people in their party, but it would just be one guest staying at a time.
So they'd have to have two cars, is that what you're saying?
That's correct. Yes, one per bedroom.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Any other comments?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a couple of observations. I think, Mr. Guines, you said you're good with it? Okay. Just to.
We got a conditional use, so.
Right. And, and looking at this, I think this will be the first short-term rental that, that section of Raynor, Jerry. I'm not positive, but I think, I think it will be. And just, just an observation, the middle of the block between Esters Boulevard and Division Street is where this is located. And Raynor is zoned industrial by the tracks on, on the south end of that block. And it's community business and, and neighborhood business by Division Street. And RM thirty in that middle section, mostly on either side. So my guess is there will likely be more requests for short-term rentals in that area. No guarantee, of course. And I think, just in looking at the pictures, the gentleman has done, done a nice job there. But I, I just know sometimes, when you're looking at consistency and everything, so long-term, from my perspective, is that it wouldn't surprise me if there are more short-term rentals coming at some point to that, that section of Raynor Street.
It's possible, and certainly, if the neighbors see that this is successful, we might get more requests. This house is a, it's not in a historic district, but it's actually a historic landmark. It has the city of Biloxi historic seal on it. We do have some historic properties, landmarks across the street also.
Right. And north of Division Street, that section of Raynor is pretty much all residential. I think RSP. All right. Thank you. That concludes my comments.
All right. Any other comments? Call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Move on to the next item.
Resolution to grant preliminary subdivision approval, coupled with approval for a zoning map amendment for the establishment of a thirty-nine lot, single-family residential subdivision at twenty-five oh six Beach Boulevard.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Tisdale. Second by Ms. Newman. Discussion?
Yeah, this is the old Breakers property. It's bounded on the east by Grandview Drive, and on the west, it's Edgewater Park. Although it says in the resolution, it mentions Edgewater Estates. I think that's just a Scrivener's error. It's actually Edgewater Park. And this site had been proposed for another development or two in the past seven or eight years, and probably prior to that as well. And just from what I've heard from the neighbors who were there at the planning commission is, they, they like the idea that it's going to be residential. So, so I, I have no objection whatsoever. I just wanted to put that out there. Is there anything you might want to add? I, I know the neighbors in Edgewater Park, that section, the east part, were concerned about drainage, but they're going to put a privacy fence up there. Marshall Drive won't be a point of ingress or regress. Be two rows of homes with a street down the middle, and then five houses fronting Beach Boulevard, I think.
Correct. Yes, sir. And it, it's being done a little differently than a, a standard subdivision.
Right.
This is being done as what's called a PDR, which is a planned development residential. And the difference is that with a, with a standard subdivision, the infrastructure, once the city council approves the preliminary plat, then the developer goes in and actually installs the infrastructure first. And once the infrastructure is put into the engineers, city engineer satisfaction, then the council approves the final plat. And from that point, I'm allowed to start issuing permits. But what's going to happen here is that this is going to be a two-phase project. They're going to be, they're going to be installing the infrastructure at the same time that they're building twenty-two of the houses. And the infrastructure is estimated to take four months, and the houses would be estimated to take five months to build. And I would not be allowed to issue any COs until the infrastructure was completed, and we actually had water and sewer and those kind of things running to it. But it's a, it's a good plan, and other than the drainage, the, the neighbors were actually happy that this is developing as residential.
You, you and I had spoken briefly, I think it was mentioned at the planning commission meeting, that we planned, the city planned to ask for a, a bond on the road and the foundations. Is that still the plan?
Well, that's up to the city engineer to decide for that. I, I will say that Elliott Homes has a great reputation for, for doing what they say they're going to do. And the houses that they build look more like custom homes than they do cookie cutter-type homes. I don't have any doubt that they'll put the infrastructure in, but if the city engineer determines that that's necessary, they said they'd be happy to do it.
I think that issue was raised just for some reason, since it's being done in two phases. If they finished one phase, and that's as far as they got, then this bond would, would cover.
Yes, sir.
I guess that portion of the unfinished.
Own up to, they're going to do the road during the fa, first phase?
Yes.
Yeah.
The road and all the, all the infrastructure will be put into in the first phase.
That's all I have. Thank you.
All right. Ms. Newman? Any comment? Anyone else?
How they going to get it off the property? Are you going to use Highway ninety or side?
No, there will not be an, an ingress or egress on Highway ninety. There will be five houses there facing Highway ninety. But what they're going to have is a U-shaped drive that comes in off of Grandview, and then turns north, and then comes back to Grandview again. And all of the driveways will be accessed from that newly constructed road. There will be no driveways off of Beach Boulevard or Grandview, other than the street ingress and egress.
What price are the houses going to be? Do you have any idea?
They have representatives here that could answer that question. I'm not sure, but I'm sure they'll be glad to step up and speak to that. The houses will be up to twenty-five hundred square feet each, is what their, their plan says. So, Mr. Nessel?
If you'd come up to the front, please.
So basically, the prices of the houses are going to be anywhere from four hundred to about half a million.
How much, I'm sorry, how much did you?
Four hundred to about half.
Yeah.
And your, your name for the record?
Josh Fleming.
Okay.
Yeah, I work with Elliott Homes, so.
All right. Anything else?
That's it.
Call for the question. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to consent.
I'll make that motion. I'll second.
Motion and a second. I just want to remind the council unofficially, you have one minute, time limit on this item, if you would like to speak, speak to it. Mr. Barrett?
I have nothing.
Mr. Tisdale?
I, I don't have anything. Thank you.
Mr. Demming?
I have nothing.
Ms. Newman? Mr. Guines?
We want a consent agenda? Thank you.
Yeah.
George has nothing.
All right. Everybody will give you thirty seconds of their time, Mr. Lawrence. Go ahead.
Just had a couple of things. I know we buy the fire trucks. We had to commit to pay for them. How are we handling that? It takes a year to bill them. It's about one point seven million. And we had to commit so we could get them built, so how does it set up financially to pay them?
If you're talking about the fire trucks, understand, understand the, the process here. You're, tonight, you're approving our ability to go buy these trucks. Now, the next thing we have to do is, we do an RFP to the banks, to a series of banks, and ask for, for them to bid on lease purchase agreement. Then we come back to the council to approve the lease purchase agreement. Once the lease purchase agreement is, so, is done, then there'll be an engagement between the, our fire department and the, the bank and the vendor that handles the trucks, the, the sale of the trucks. These trucks will not likely show up in this fiscal year. So at some point, it, it's, we'll end up moving that, that money out of the expenses for this year, and then we'll re-budget that when we do the budget for fiscal year twenty-three.
So you probably, you won't have them all in one year anyway.
So we, we can't write a check for these trucks until we have them in our possession.
All right.
And that's usually about a year.
That's what I was wanting, just making sure on that. And on P Papa, what is the value under the short form agreement professional service? What is that? On P? We are, we are kind of.
P Papa?
Yeah, Papa.
Yeah. Okay. So that, that's just a, a change order that rearranges the, the, the budget for that entity, BMA, for their RPR work, their basically construction inspection work, and it just moves the money from one bucket to another without changing the total value.
I was just wondering, I thought it was the value of the short form. I didn't know exactly what that meant, short form. That's why I was asking that question. That's what it says. I was just, didn't quite understand that. I was just checking with you. And the next one, Quebec Q. We got a, an understanding with Spoke Studio. Who is that? Spoke Studio?
This is the opportunity that the police is going to have to be movie stars.
What? Say again?
A movie. A movie's coming to town.
They're, they're a studio. They're in Los Angeles. They've done home improvement, several actual series. They're not, not in, not just a made-up, fly-by-night sort of studio. And they approached the police to follow them, and they, it's not a cops sort of show. It's more of a, they're doing several cities around the south, and they'll be sort of managing, showing what goes on in a, the day in the life of a policeman, so.
And while you are talking, this one for you, Peter Lima L. What, what is that agreement with Main Street? What is this for? Which one?
Is that Josette?
Howard. To Howard?
Yeah.
It's like another sixty-day extension. I think that's the Josette's property.
I thought it was just an extension.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. That concludes the consent agenda. All in favor? Those opposed? Any exceptions? All right. The motion carries. Move on to code enforcement hearings.
The first item on the agenda, item A, Charles O. and Cindy L. Crone, Zero Wool Market Lake Road. I'd like to ask the council, let's just consider this resolved. Mr. Crone passed away, and the mortgage company's in the process of foreclosing. So realistically, we would have to come back and start all over again anyway. So rather than continue this again, I would ask that this just be resolved.
All right. Just as a point of order, is there anybody here to speak on this matter? They're being, this case is closed.
Okay. Item B, Nancy J.C. Phillips, two-two-five-five Stelly Drive. This is resolved. She has pulled a permit, and she has started making repairs to the house.
Thank you. Code enforcement is closed. Move on to the routine agenda. Do I have a motion, Mr. Lawrence?
I'll second.
All right. Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Guines, second it. Mr. Lawrence.
All right, walk. Come in, you shoot once a week. Give us a good report here. Get that suit and tie on for the, for Tuesdays only.
All right. Well, council, thank you. We do have one point six eight million that will be coming into the queue. The only downside is, right now, Mima's saying they're not going to issue any payments till after April first. They didn't give any clarification as to why at this time, but we do have the one point six eight million, but they won't start putting it into the system until after April first.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Is that an April fool's joke?
Well, that's exactly what I asked them. I said, now, come on now, are y'all just trying to pull my leg later? But they said, no, it's just one of those things.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
And we also got the two point one million from DC.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Yep.
Part of that money was because of the efforts of Councilman Guines going up there and doing a little discussion. So thank you for that. All right. Any other discussion on the routine agenda? Okay. All in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Need a motion to adjourn?
Second.
All right. By Mr. Tisdale. Second by Mr. Lawrence. Any discussion? All in favor? We're adjourned. Less than an hour.